Meeting to order, a work session. We can do rule call please.
Ken Mahoney?
Here.
Lisa Keel?
Present.
Susan Nuhah?
Yes.
Bob Pires?
Here.
Laura LaGuire?
Yes.
Paul Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Lohman?
Here.
I invite the audience to stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a work session, but we still have an agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. The fun part beginning, number five.
The fun commence. Okay. I will kind of walk through my presentation this evening, giving some highlights. If there's specific questions that you saw within the budget, we can kind of back into those. I'll just kind of work front to back. There'll be some of the same information that's in the actual document. Kind of the process after this meeting tonight, if council is fine with the budget as is for the adoption at the next meeting, this becomes publicly available then for review. We just kind of wanted to go through that real quick. So let's start off just kind of some of the budget highlights and the focus for this year. We've been continuing to try to reduce the millage over the last several years. So proposing to again do that this year and reduce the millage by .15 mils. We still have a significant fund balance, so we're using that fund balance to stabilize our other funds and also to implement projects. So when we need some additional funds for parks or for streets, et cetera, then we have funds available to do that. It also helps to position those projects or a fund for an upcoming year. So we may not need the funds this year, but we can have that and kind of waiting for an upcoming year. So we've been able to do that. And then also utilize that fund balance to continue the parks project improvements. So a lot of the deferred maintenance improvements, this kind of started in the fall of 2022. Parks and Recreation Committee has been kind of working on that. You probably saw in the subcommittee summary, some of the action items coming out of there. So that's still very viable and you'll see that we're dedicating significant amount of money to parks this coming year. And then closely monitor fund balances and cash on hand. I have some of the charts that are in the report itself that I'll kind of talk through. Kind of a more valuable component for staff is to look at that ongoing cash on hand so that we not only know what the balance is, but do we have cash for an upcoming year for the preceding years to make sure we can do those projects because that's obviously very important as well. As far as revenues for this next year, again proposing 16 mils instead of 16.15. So this is a reduction in the millage rate. Still has a revenue source of 1.42 million. The next largest fund that the city receives in is the local community stabilization fund, projecting that at 603. So what we've been doing is kind of averaging the last couple of years. It's increased slightly over the last couple of years, but we always budget a little bit conservatively to make sure that we're not overestimating depending on that revenue. So for last fiscal year was 596. Estimates are actually about 622, but again, just kind of keeping that number a little bit more realistic. So 603 constitutional sales tax distribution, then us 225,000. So those are kind of the three large ones and we'll see how that distribution fits within the overall budget when we get to those charts.
Drop in the bud, excuse me, drop in the millage from those two numbers, what does that amount to in the money?
.15 is probably 25, 30,000.
Is that three out of four years that we're just going to reduce now?
Yes. This is going to be hard to see, but I just always put this up there. This is an ongoing chart that I use to track. This is cash on hand. So this is not only tracking where our current fund balance is in our current fiscal year, the upcoming year, our obligations within those funds, looking at the balance sheet. So taking all those numbers actually can give us then a cash balance on hand. So let's see when we get to actual fund balance. Just looking at that number straight as it is, it's not a true reflection of what the city has for those different funds. So this is also kind of dependent on what's happening within a given fund during a month or a week. And so I usually run this report quarterly or a little bit more often if you have a lot of activities just so that we know kind of where we are and not just the fund balance itself. As part of the ongoing budget is the pension obligation. So both for the pre-2012 and post-2012. You can see we've funded this quite significantly in the past several years. So we took it at one time low 69% all the way up to 97%. So have made significant contributions to that, so that is very stable. So no additional funds transferred as of right now. We don't have our report. We'll probably get it in the next week or so. But don't see any large changes in that because we have 97% funded. Also part related to that pension is through MERS. It's just to show you, this was last year percent funded. We were not 96.1%. One thing we did last year as part of the, or just after the budget process, we wanted to make sure the actual individual divisions, so pre and post-2012, were above that 80% funded. So you can see as we look at this year, the first two, so these are pre-2012, are now over 80% funded and those after 2012, 104, 97% funded. So again, a very good position for those obligations. One thing that has happened in doing that, focusing on the pension is we have kind of let the OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is life, not life insurance, health insurance for retirees, again, pre-2012, just kind of gently slide down. So because there's not a huge liability, so you can see even at the end of this last assumption here, uniform assumption, we only had a liability of 138,389. So not a huge number in the big picture. But the percent funded had dropped to 81.85%, which is still well over the state required. But proposing at the end of this fiscal year to transfer 85,000 of our current balance and that brings this back up to about 90% funded. So having those funds between 80 and 90% funded kind of guarantees for that next fiscal year that you'll have a stable contribution going in so that you don't have these huge peaks and valleys. So we're going to bump that up in the current fiscal year before we close it out. As far as the distribution is fund revenues, you can see for, this is all a general fund. So local tax millage brings in about half of our revenue. State 33%, so a third, and then all other revenues 17%. So that's kind of our general fund revenues. This does not include revenues that receive like say for the water fund or sewer fund because those are generated through the actual service fees. As far as general fund appropriations, you can see the distribution across kind of all departments. So general government just over 20%, police department is 30% and then all of those other small components that hit within the general fund. So general public services, this other services, kind of miscellaneous activities, parks, cemetery. And then we're still transferring about 5% of that general fund balance out to other funds that we can utilize. As far as our appropriation distribution, you can see about a third is used for staffing. So this is across all the departments. Major projects, almost 40% projects and activities. We still have about 4% that we are contributing to pension, that healthcare. And then all of our kind of general operations and supplies is kind of another third, so just under 30%. So a lot of our funding as far as appropriations are for those major projects and activities. So it's not just general operations. Staffing appropriations, it's pretty close to a third throughout all departments. You can see City Hall is the lowest at 25%. Police Department is at 39% and Public Works is at 36%. So this is pretty consistent from year to year. Fluctuates a little bit depending on when we have those pre-2012 retirements. Those are significant savings for a given department. So Police Department now having the older staff, well, actually has the range. It has the oldest and the younger staff, but we still have some pre-2012 staff in there. So that percentage creeps up a little bit. Cost of living increases for this next year is 3%. What the city has consistently done is as part of the union contract, we negotiate those cost of living increases on three-year terms. So for three years, we know what that increase is. So for this upcoming year, it's 3%, same as the union contract. This police department budget also includes moving the secretary position from a part-time to a full-time staff, which is simply adding four more hours to that. That does not contribute to this big change in the police department appropriations. This has to deal more with the number of staff and it doesn't include the contributions that we get back from the school for the school resource officer. So this is kind of front-loaded. So you can see that school resource officer at the police department, we only contribute 20 to 25% of the wages for that position. School covers the rest. So that is included in here as the overall cost. As far as where we are with the general fund, this is one of the graphs within the budget plan. So you can see as far as what we're trying to do is maintain the 25%. This has been a goal of the city to always maintain 25% of revenues. We've consistently, both as percentage of revenues and also year-end fund balance, been well above that mark. So this includes even when we're making additional contributions to the pension and OPEB and all those other obligations, we've been able to do cost savings and continue to add to that. In fact, if we look at kind of the general trend for general fund reserve, there's that 25%. So I've kind of, this has been down there for a long time. I crossed it out for this year. So because we don't need extra funds for pension shortfalls, we still have assisting with projects and cash flow for other funds, so continuing to do that. And then also trying to maintain a million dollar fund reserve. So if you look back at this table, so here if we did the 25%, we'd be above 750. If we simply maintained a million dollars, we'd be at 30%. So we're pushing up that point a bit. So that's how we can reduce the millage rate and still contribute to other large projects and activities. So because of that, for this next year, we are recommending to contribute 135,000 for local streets. Large portion of this is going to be for the chip and seal projects throughout the local neighborhoods. So large component of that. And then a small portion, 13,500 for the launch ramp. This is for that lighting project. So that would kind of wrap that up before we look at doing the whole paving, repaving of the existing and the gravel area, probably not next year, but maybe the year after we'll have fund reserves in there again. So at the end of the fiscal year, we still have a fund balance of 1.6 million dollars and just under 49%. So just under 50%. So in a good situation there. The only city debt obligations that we currently have are the USDA Rural Water Fund. So this was taken out in 2017, about 2.8 million dollars in the original amount. You can see because of that amount, even with the low interest rate, by the time we pay this off in 40 years, we'll have paid 3.6 million dollars. So it is nice to get that funding all at once to do multiple projects, but you can see it also is a considerable debt obligation for the city. So we did retire this past year both the Montague Fire Station because that was paid off by the fire authority and we held the original note. So that was taken care of and then we didn't early pay off the Volvo front-end loader this last year. So would have paid it off this year, but we had some additional funds. We just paid it off last year. So we only have the one debt obligation.
What's the interest rate on that loan? Do you remember? Wasn't it three?
I don't know. Did you get that for you? Seems like it was just over three.
Yeah, my hazy memory is 3%. Impotence on hazing.
As far as general fund appropriation highlights, if you kind of, if you want to follow along, the account numbers on the left are the same as the account numbers on your left within the budget report itself. So the way to read these numbers is kind of the first number is always the fund number. So general fund is always 101. The second number is kind of the department number and then you start getting into smaller classification. So this 101, 101 is a city council portion of the budget. So this is kind of the line items that we've set aside for the fireworks contribution as well as the sports and shorts program. There's also, the total budget for that is 4,600, 4,600 because there are always kind of some other small activities that the council does throughout the year to kind of make up that difference. When we go into Department 173, which then is Administrative Assistance Planning, zoning administrator, this is actually carryover from the current fiscal year. We had two contracts with McKenna to finish up the zoning ordinance review, which they're still working on, and recreational plan contract. So these were bigger contracts and this is just the carryover for this fiscal year to kind of finish that up. So $12,000 for this upcoming year. 101, 228, this is for kind of our computer activity. So we currently have a computer IT contract. We also have kind of been looking at and need a computer security contract, both because of our connection with central dispatch fiber, but also our activities. So this number 16,000 includes both our general IT as well as our computer, the new computer security contract. So that goes across all the city computers. So implementing that this next year. 101, 261, so this is for engineering services. So you probably saw this in the subcommittee notes, Wellhouse Road, which is also the Lanley Street extension where we had three wells out on that point. This is not to actually do the solar activities, but to start that engineering and permit work that's necessary. So about 10,000, 11,000 of that is estimate for engineering services. And then there's another about 7,000 in there for miscellaneous professional services. So this is all professional services within 261. So kind of two different components. 101, 261, city every year puts in a contingency. Over the last couple of years, we've established that as 2% of revenues. So this is kind of again contingency. So if we need to shuffle funds or if something is looking tight, we have funds already within the budget. So just under 56,000 for contingency for the upcoming year. To give you an idea for this current fiscal year, what we're wrapping up, we had about the same amount in there. We didn't need it. So that actually zeros out for this current fiscal year. 101, 440, this is leaf pile disposal. I note this only because this is going to be a double year for us. So usually it costs us nine, about $9,000 for a single year. But it also depends when they pick up that huge leaf pile that's out at the DPW. So sometimes they, just depending on size, have to pick up spring and fall. So it hits the same fiscal year, but different calendar years. So that's going to be this year. So you'll have several years where it's just 9,000 and then all of a sudden you'll have a double year. So that's happening this year. So 18,000 for that. 101, 567, which is the cemetery. So this is the chip and seal project for those cemetery rows, just under 12,000 appropriation there. And then 101, 602, senior center parking lot repaving, 9,500. So this is splitting the cost for the parking lot that runs up the side of the senior center. And then you'll see when we get to the water fund, there's also the alley repair behind the senior center. So it's all kind of wrapped into one project. It's being split between the general fund and the water fund to take care of both those at once. Couple other general fund highlights. Once we move into Parks Department, which is 101, 751, here's those kind of three large projects, which we also talked about the last meeting. So Maple Grove Shoreline, just under, just over 240,000. Maple Grove Playground, 192,000 and then the Dog Park. Let me just jump ahead here a second. So this is the Maple Beach project. So the shoreline effort basically is from this point in the parking lot across. So everything that you see lakerd of here is part of that 274,000, including the docks, the new beach, the retaining wall, restored sidewalk, new plantings throughout dredging in lake itself to get rid of all the debris and then new sand throughout the entire area. And then the playground, 192,000 for playground structure and also the ADA compliant material underneath. So if you were reading through the notes there, the discussion at Parks and Recreation Committee, because we're still waiting on the permit to, well, could we flop those two? We could not just because of the engineering and also bidding out the playground and still make the current fiscal year. But we do have sufficient funds to just include them both in this next fiscal year. So that's the proposal, keep those both in there. And then the Dog Park, so this is in the Cullen Field area. So Cullen is just to the north of here. Phase one is kind of focusing on the Dog Park area, then looking at state funding for pickleball courts and then an entire parking lot restoration or redo that would service both Cullen Field and then this area. So this is just the Dog Park component, so which includes kind of the, I'll jump ahead. So which includes the fencing. This is about an acre in size. So all the fencing that goes around, small dog side, big dog side and all the cement work to make the connections. 101, 901, City Hall and Police Department renovations. So we've been continuing to look at this probably for four years, putting in a small amount every year. Never really seemed to make any progress. Have gone through, working with staff and getting some initial estimates for things like new windows, new doors, carpeting, doing some office enclosures, new office furniture, you know, basically an entire renovation. So putting in a placeholder, 150,000. I did speak with the building inspector and we can use a local contractor without getting for a full architectural designs. So that will be some cost savings for us as well. Also in 101, 901, these are still capital improvements. We have some museum work that needs to be done, both on the roof and the brick itself. The roofing system is about 10 to 12,000 dollars. It's where there's, sits in one of those kind of troughs. Actually so deteriorated that there's a bunch of dry rot underneath now. So we have to do some structural repairs. And then the brickwork is actually on the backside where there was an ice dam at one time and peeled off a bunch of the face of the brick. So that, all that repair, 47,300. In this same line item, we also do kind of a standard landscape allocation of about 14,000. So this, any type of landscaping upgrades, whether it's one of our little pocket parks on Dow Lane, whether it's landscaping out in front of City Hall or near the sign. So that continues in there. And then also a small miscellaneous property improvements of about 3,000. So this might be lighting upgrades for one of the buildings, et cetera. So 64,300 for that line item. Last one in there, 101, 901, 976, is well number four, solar interconnect. So this is the project that connects the farmer's market, artisan market and well number four. So moving forward on that, something to kind of recognize, we do have this initial outlay, but we will get 40% of that back when we put in the cash rebate, right? It's 40%. So that comes back then to the city in the next year. And then we do have significant cost savings by tying all of those three systems together. So right now they're actually three separate meters. Essentially creates a little microgrid on that side of the city. Before I move to the others, kind of what I'm going to do this evening is when we talk about each of the funds, if you look through, yeah, unless there was significant change, and these are, obviously these are bigger items, so I'll kind of mention those. But if they're pretty similar to where they've been previously, unless you have a question, that's kind of the highlight. So anything else that people saw within the general fund appropriations? The next one I'm going to talk about, it's going to be a little bit out of sync with the, with the budget document because of the fund numbers, but I will. Like the next one actually is the Cemetery Trust Fund. I'll talk about that towards the end. So next one is Major Fund, which is going to be Fund 202, Major Street Fund. So this, here's our fund balance itself. You can see as you look at this, so we've kind of been down here. The reason we're seeing this huge increase in this current fiscal year, so we're doing those two large projects, both Wilcox and Cook Street. So our fund reserve is, looks very hefty right now, but we will spend a majority of that in the next couple of months here. So then if you were to look into the future of 2025, we'd be back down to that kind of general operation. So we just have a lot of revenue coming in. But that fund is very healthy. Local fund, you can see is pretty much more standard where you regenerate some revenue and then you spend off those revenues to kind of keep roads in place. So this also includes that 135,000 appropriation for this year so we can do all the chip and seal projects. So as we look at, I'll kind of zip through these two because we talked kind of in detail at the last meeting. Street fund highlights, so we do have those two large federal grants that then transferred through the state. 346,500 for the Cook Street project and then 168,365 for Wilcox. We do also have significant state revenue coming for general maintenance and operations. So we're moving from an estimated 345 last year to 352,000 in the majors and then 124,500 to 127,000 for locals. So that's dependent on road miles that we have within the city that were allocated for ongoing maintenance and operations. So within those funds, so I kind of marked out if they're major or local. So major is both the Cook Street project and Wilcox Street project. So there's those match amounts I just talked about. The total project costs are up above each one of those. So 462, 475 for Cook, 260,720 for Wilcox. So then the city covers the difference between the match and then what, or what the state provides and then what the actual costs are. So this includes not all construction match, but engineering match, testing that has to be done. So this, yes?
Are those fundings that you're getting state-informed funding, is that typical of what municipalities get?
Nope.
I don't think so. Is the city just really good at getting them?
Yep. So you have to apply for them. You have to fight for them. So it's all the local municipalities have their projects. They have to be shovel-ready and you have to have They have to be shovel ready and you have to have the funds to do the project, so.
They have to have the funds even though they then give you a grant, so they don't need all the funds?
Yep.
Amazing.
And I think the, the big catch, you can see, this is a pretty good example. So Wilcox, so the total project cost is 260,000. So city's still throwing in 100,000 dollars to get 160. The, the fund amount that the, the state gives you is 80/20. So they cover 80% and you pay 20. But what they don't say is then you have to pay for all the other kind of additional items. The pre-engineering, the, the match on the construction, the match on the engineering, the match on the sampling. So a lot of times that number gets pretty big for municipalities to fight off, so.
Even so, more than 50% covered?
Yeah.
Good job.
That, I would say the one issue with these grants is they stretch out over multiple fiscal years. So we have to continue to track them because even though the project may have been done, well, these two projects will be done in the next couple of months. Is it will take the state, the year, year and a half to close out that project. So we have to continue to carry that on the books and keep track of it. So that is one downfall that it sometimes can hinder other projects from happening.
Jeff, does that suction of Cook Street, does that include any sidewalk?
Does not.
It does not?
So that would be, I think that will be one of the routes for safe routes to schools. That will be a priority route. Especially to get it up towards Mason Street so that it can create part of that loop. Major, other major projects, chip and seal, Cook Ferry and Water. I'll jump to the map here in a second. Also on major Old Channel Trail pedestrian bridge and then the Wilcox Street sidewalk project. So both of these were projects from current fiscal year, but we were just waiting on timing. And actually the pedestrian bridge, we're still waiting on permits. So that's kind of in the wings. Local projects, 102,000 for chip and seal. Again, we'll look at the map here in a second. We also, local streets as far as sidewalk, Sheridan Street sidewalk project is wrapping up. Just over, or just under 6,000. And then a little section on Mead Street that we'll look at here. Local street, we also did put in funds for some additional speed radars. So these are the signs, the speed sign with the radar underneath and the blinking slow down. So we currently have three of those and a lot of positive input on placing those around. So invest in some of those and then storm drain cleaning throughout the city, both major and local. So if we look at the chip and seal projects here, so major streets that are being done. So water street, so this is from the light going down towards the boat launch. So all the way to the end right by the boat storage facilities, Ferry Street North. So from the corner up to Hunt Street. And then Cook Street all the way from Dow Lane all the way to Old Channel Trail. I think I mentioned this in the last meeting. Cook Street is pretty, pretty new, but this is all about preventative maintenance. If you can put that kind of scuff surface on the top, you can add three to five more years onto a road. And if you keep doing that, you keep extending the life of the road. So trying to do that with the majors as well as the locals. Local streets end up being a little bit of a popcorn from year to year because we may think that we know which streets for the upcoming year. And then by the time we get through the winter, we realize that, oh, we need to focus on this street over here rather than that one. We do try to do a neighborhood when we're in the area. So all the pink areas, highlights here are where we're proposing to do. So some of these are connecting to work done in the last couple of years. Like this whole section over here, we did a bunch of the Schultz-Hunt-Witney, Antsakami area the last couple of years. So now kind of moving this direction. And then also out here at Judson-Jackson, we actually had some asphalt that was failing that was peeled up and we did an overlay so then to reseal that section. So that's all the chip and seal projects. And then a quick overview of the sidewalks again. So Wilcox Street after the street is done itself. This is the sidewalk project on the north side of the street. The Sheridan Street strip, which is in our current fiscal year and is still likely to be complete. Contractor has promised me, so we'll get that little section done. Proposed for next fiscal year is one small section on Mead Street by the museum here in Mayor Lomond's house. This is one of our priority sidewalks that's in really bad shape. And then this one over here is the Old Channel Trail pedestrian bridge. And just kind of that diagram, because the bridge is failing and the cost to repair the bridge, as a bridge, this is where the color extension is going in. Then we'll put the sidewalk continuous along there and then do a little pedestrian bump out to kind of mimic that bridge feel so people can get off the sidewalk itself. Question on any of those projects or those two funds? Water fund, so now we're getting to the interesting ones as far as fund balance because you can see these numbers kind of go up and down. One thing to remember about these next ones is that the, the net position also includes assets in the ground. So these are pipes and meters and all of that stuff. So even though you look at that and say, wow, we have more than three and a half million dollars in that fund, well, that's not cash on hand, that's not projects and activities, that's total net position. This year for water, we have some smaller projects and we're still continuing to work on lead line replacement. So, and the water fund, which is 591. So well number five, we're going to put in a new VFD, variable frequency drive, and do some little piping remodel. So just 4,000, so small amount. Looking at replacing some of our chlorine pumps within the wells, so not all of them. We're doing a couple of test chlorine pumps. And then well inspection in miscellaneous within that department. So 22,200. As we kind of bump down to 591-564, this is a similar amount as last year, but just to kind of keep it on your radar. So we're going to spend about 77,000 dollars for lead line replacements, so service line replacement. This is about 18 services throughout the city. We're two years ahead of schedule, but this continues to let us to keep improving on that. As we're doing our final survey, I think we're actually not only ahead of schedule, but we have less lines than we originally thought to replace. So we're going to be even further ahead once we finalize that report.
What part of town are we in now that we're doing that?
So all of the, all of the hydro core inspections have been completed throughout the entire city. So now what we do, when we do the service line replacements, that we pick a neighborhood, like let's say that there's five of them on this street. So we'll just do five of them right in a row. And then we'll jump to another area until we reach that dollar amount. So it might be 18 services, it might be, it might be 12, it might be whatever. So we have a kind of dollar amount allocated. And that's kind of, we're positioning those so that it makes economic sense from the contractor. So he's not doing one here and one over there. So we just kind of pick the little areas. Eagle drinking water grant, so we have in this year 224,200 dollars. This is all grant funding. It started last year. We've only expended a few thousand dollars of that, so we're just pushing it to this next year. So this is our water asset program, priority project list. All of that is through contract through Prime Newhoff. And then they let us do some of the lead line service, survey work through that grant as well. So this is basically pass-through funds to let us do some activities within the water department. We do have some small roof replacements on several of the wells, number four, five, and six. It's well told, just over 12,000 dollars. These are small roofs. These are all going to be metal roofs, so we'll have a 40 to 50 years in lifetime on those. 591-901, which is our capital projects within water fund, 67,000 dollars. This is for six inch water main replacement. So this is the water main that's from the stoplight to just past Shelby State Bank, where we had two water breaks this last year. So we're not only going to replace that section, but also move it out from underneath the street. So if we do have an issue, again, we don't have to close out lanes and cut off the asphalt. So 67,000 for that. And then here's that other 9,500, the other half of that project behind the senior center. Questions on water fund? I'll jump through a couple of them and then I'll talk about appropriation highlights as far as the charts themselves. So launch ramp fund, as far as net position. So this one, this is an enterprise fund. So both water sewer, launch ramp campground. What's the other enterprise fund? I don't know, we'll come across it.
I was half listening.
Yeah, it's all right. So launch ramp fund, basically what we're trying to do is maintain not only the cash reserve, but this net position, kind of keeping this a steady line. Because with these enterprise funds, you don't want to accumulate too much revenue because then it shows that you're overcharging. So for example, with water, that you're overcharging for water services. The same with the launch ramp fund. We want that fee structure to kind of help us with operations and maintenance and then some capital projects every now and again. So we have kind of a stable position there. Same with sewer fund. So this one is slowly decreasing. When Eric comes to do our audit, he'll tell the city to be cautious and watch the sewer fund because it keeps going down. But you can see it's been very stable. In fact, when we had our last, our last rate study, we didn't do anything with the sewer rate because it wasn't generating enough revenue for operations and maintenance. So we do keep our eye on that, but not necessarily a concern for staff, just for Eric because he sees that slow trend. Campground fund, we're going to see a little bit of bump in the campground fund because we've been adding some additional funds for the wifi and kind of utility upgrades over there. So then these will be expended kind of back down to that normal status in the, in the next year. And then garage and equipment fund. This is one of those funds where we see these peaks, where we generate revenue from equipment rental and then it's spent down to purchase the new equipment. So we'll talk about kind of all of those with a couple of highlights. So launch ramp fund, the only project happening this year is that 13-5, which is coming from the general fund to finish the parking lot lighting as that fund recovers and we can do paving in future years. Sewer fund, we have just a small line item, 6,500 for asphalt patching. So we've been doing a lot of residential work. So sometimes we have to tear up the asphalt to make that sewer connection. So some funds in there for that. Also in the sewer fund, 590-901, Old Channel Lift Station Solar. This actually was a decrease from the original estimate, which was about 52,000. So it's now just over 30. Again, we'll get 40% back of that, but we do have to have the cash upfront. And then also significant outlay for residential sewer laterals. There is actually quite a push right now in the city to start building on these small outlots that we have. So we know that we'll have some other residential laterals. So another 24,000 for that. So a total on that line item, 55,900. Campground, we have the wifi network and upgrades for this current, or for the upcoming fiscal year. We had the same amount in the current fiscal year. So this is also switching to Catchmark to do all of those upgrades. At the end of this, we will actually have fiber going into the campground. So we'll be able to get rid of the, our Comcast spectrum service cable. So we can, all the tenants can then stream through the wifi. We do also have in here the campground solar grid. So this is not only the campground office itself, but also weathering park and all the street lights from the bridge all the way to this stoplight. It also has a battery backup system, so all that kind of operates even when power's out. Unfortunately, we can't operate the stoplight because that's controlled by MDOT. It's got a separate service. Because that would be nice, because when the power goes out and everybody does a little duck and weave there. As part of that campground office, we're also putting a roof on there. Again, a steel roof for just about 6,000 dollars for that. So all that 96,000 in expenditures or extra expenditures appropriations in the campground. And then the last one, garage and equipment fund, which is 640. Two allocations there, major appropriations there. The one is fairly small, 7,800 for a new auger for the salt spreader. And then a large chunk, 260,000 for a plow truck. This replaces plow number 50. It's likely that this will happen over two years because of the time that it takes to actually get the first part, the cabin chassis built, and then the, the dump part. And the plow part is separate. But we need to make sure we have the funds in there so they're not reallocated for other equipment. So we're setting it all aside in the current fiscal year. The, I'll kind of move on. And also it's kind of 5B, the millage rate and also the resolutions. I'll just kind of walk through if that's okay, Mayor. So at the next meeting, on the third Monday here in June, we'll have two resolutions on there. So Resolution 202403, which is the adoption of the budget itself. So this is the resolution for that. I think I included that in your packet there. It's the budget and the tax rate is the other resolution. Vice versa there, sorry. Millage first, because then the millage determines the budget itself. And then if those resolutions are approved, not only is the budget approved, but then we file the paperwork with the state as far as where we are. So to give you an idea of how we're also doing on the millage rate as far as with the Headley amendments. So the city's original mills were 20,000, so we could do up to 20,000 mills. Even with Headley, we would be down to maximum allowable millage 16.62. So we're also with our millage rate below that maximum that Headley would let us. So we're continuing to kind of beat the Headley mark as far as savings and kind of budgeting strategy. The last item I have for you this evening is the fee schedule. I have just a few items for the fee schedule. This is in the back of your budget. I always highlight them in yellow. Let's see if I can get mine. Can I get my magnifying glass here for you? All right, there we go. So two items kind of at the first end of the fee schedule. This is under general administration. It's related to registration fees. So both for rental registration and business registration have been an ongoing two-year registration process. And so as you first register, so as an example, your business, there is a, try to find it here. 25 dollar. Yeah, so business registration, two years is 25 dollars. So then even upon renewal, the way it is currently set up is that when you renew, you would pay 25 dollars again. So staff is proposing that when you renew, if you renew prior to the expiration, then it's zero cost. So if you let your So if you let your business registration expire, it's essentially like you are starting a new business again, and you have to pay the twenty-five dollars. So this encourages people to re-register prior to expiration, it helps with paperwork and time for staff to then process it. We do send out reminders, so people would get reminders that they need to register again, and the same for rental. Once you rental, or once you register for rental, it's fifty dollars. If you get the reminder and you renew before it expires, you're just auto-renewing it. If you decide to wait, then you pay fifty dollars again. So it rewards people for continuing to register, and that we don't have to continue to follow up to get people to register. So that's one proposal. Looking down at campground fees themselves, so this is proposed actually by both the campground managers and the campers, to have our rates better reflect where we should be within the market. So we currently have a rate of twenty-seven-hundred per year for a seasonal hookup, so about five and a half months. If you look at any of the campgrounds in West Michigan, they are even over thirty-six-hundred for a seasonal rate. What we're proposing, so it's not a shock to the campers, is that for the next fiscal year, upcoming, or I should say, the next camping season, it goes from twenty-seven-hundred to three thousand, and then the next year after that, thirty-three-hundred to thirty-six-hundred. So we roll it in over three years, and we get back up with market rates within the area. I think we'll still be below. We like to adopt it on a three-year schedule, so those that show up every year, they know what it's going to be for three years. And then that also just affects the seasonal site deposit, which is always just half of the total seasonal rate, so that's that reflection there. As far as the water rates, so it has been an ongoing practice of the city, as part of the budget process, to do a two percent increase for the water rates. So this allows us to kind of incrementally have those water rates move forward without doing a rate study, so that when we do a rate study, we're not seeing a twenty percent increase in rates for consumers. So you make the rate increases annually at a very small proportion. So for water consumption, this is per thousand gallons, it moves from three dollars and seventy-five cents to three eighty-three. Township then is reflective of that, so townships are set at twice the city rate. That's based on a water use agreement that we have with the townships. And then the same for the ready-to-serve, these are all two percent, so this is a three-quarter inch meter, seven dollars twenty-nine cents moves up slightly to seven forty-four. So city has done this in the past four years, to keep up with kind of the increases with the water system itself. So that's what you see in yellow. If we skip forward to the, find that sheet here. This is the one that's a little bit odd, because these are fire line rates. These are, were established about eight years ago. Well, it's got to be eight years, because it says eighty percent. So it was a ten percent increase every year until we reached what the ready-to-serve rate is. So again, it was, instead of giving this big shocker to those people that have these large fire lines, so large commercial operations, industrial, they were supposed to be paying the ready, the full ready-to-serve rate from the very beginning, but we had another reduced rate. So we've incrementally increased it by ten percent every year, until we actually get to that hundred percent rate. So you can see for this year, it's our eighth year, so it would be eighty percent of the standard ready-to-serve rate. And then the last one, I think this is grinder pump. City still has one person that has a grinder pump on the system, so two percent increase goes from forty-three ninety-six to forty-four eighty-four. If you will note, any of the water rates not related to ready-to-serve, actually they all are on here, ordinance number three-oh-nine. So city can only increase water rates, because it's considered a tax through an ordinance. So associated with this budget would be an ordinance at the next meeting at three-oh-nine, if the council wants to see this fee schedule implemented. Question on anything within the fee schedule?
A couple of questions. What is the purpose of the rental registration?
The rental reg, so this was kind of two-part. There has been a push for, let me slide back here. There's a push for when short-term rentals, in fact, there's still a push for short-term rentals within communities. We didn't want to do the full regulation as far as inspection and all of those activities, but we did not even know where they were, both short-term and long-term. So the rental registration provides that they have to register with the city to have a rental, and then that also allows us to track them and make sure they're meeting the other ordinance requirements. So like, how you're taking care of your garbage, how your, where the parking is located, those different items.
Are we, are we doing anything with that to make sure that when property is being transferred, that they're brought up to code?
We, as far as rental registration, or as far as rental properties, if it's a residential, we can't right now, because of how our ordinance is in the state law. So we can't even send in a billion inspector without a permit. So they would, the new owner would have to pull the permit. So this is kind of one way, at least we know where they are, because there are some minimum requirements which we can still enforce, but we can't do the whole inspection process, so.
My other question was on the, on the business registrations.
Yep.
Are those just brick and mortar businesses? Or are we, do we require a registration with food trucks and temporary type businesses?
Basically just brick and mortar, because food trucks we capture through the vendor application process, where they can get either a daily or an annual license. It does also catch home occupations, so if they're, have their home and they want to have a home occupation, they can, going through the right zoning process, and then they just also register as a business, write the address.
Okay, my, my last question, you probably didn't, you haven't gotten to it yet, I don't know if you were going to say it. Are, do we, when people don't pull a permit, like they're supposed to, for various things, and then we have to go out there and make them pull a permit, do we penalize them in any way? Do we charge them double for the permit or anything? I didn't see anything there.
No, because we can't, like, part of that is set by the state building code. So once we know about it, then they obviously have to pull the permit. I would say the inspectors are a little bit less lenient, once somebody pulls a permit, or has to pull permit in that scenario. So there's no way for us to penalize them if they don't pull it and we catch them, because it's just the state law process as far as how that works.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Yeah, I just have a question about the campground fees. Would there be any benefit to us if, if we offered, like, if they wanted to reserve two years? Like, say at the three-thousand-dollar mark, to save them that three-hundred dollars, is there any benefit to us to having that money early, so to speak, or?
Not really.
Not really? Okay, not a big enough chunk?
In fact, it probably makes it a little bit more difficult, because we do have, like a lot of people will reserve at the end of the season. We have several people that, due to circumstances, the next spring, and all of a sudden they're looking for refund.
Oh, gotcha.
And we haven't been able to fill the seasonal until then, we're kind of going through the list and shuffling people around.
Is the campground usually full?
From here on out, pretty much, until after Labor Day, both seasonal and like daily sites, yeah.
You would have to know how many cities in Michigan have campgrounds, would you?
I don't. One of the few.
So are you all set with all those, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. There's no further questions, we move on to number six, public comments. This is open public comment. If you make any comments, please use the microphone and we'll get your comments in three minutes.
Let's see if I'm picking up okay on the speakers. My name is Bruce Frelick, I live at fifty-one fifty, Brooklyn Circle, here in the city, and I'm glad to see our, our street is on the chip and seal list for the year, so good. Thank you. Four items and a quick story. Thank you for continuing with moving downward with the millage. All of us benefit, and it means we're monitoring things to make sure we maintain levels of service, but in a responsible way. Second comment, I think you're doing really well in terms of morale of the employees and staff, because of paying attention to the retirement and the OPEB funding situation. Those percentages are much better than they were even just a few years ago. And I think that means that a person currently working for all of us feels better and more secure about their future and their family's well-being, and that'll reflect in their services and attitude. Third item, you are working very similarly with your school resource officers to the pattern that the county sheriff is also using. So in remote parts of the county, where townships have a fairly strong influx of seasonal activity in the summertime, he is working to have deputies partially supported through a school resource officer, package of compensation, tapping into school district money, and then specific monies from individual townships, depending on how many parks, for example, they have in that township, so that it's a partnership, instead of strictly county dollars, paying for the entire wage of the deputy. You've got a mixture of school, township, and county, in order to accomplish more deputies present, especially through the summer months. SROs and summer months are a good fit, because SROs are happening, you know, September through, say, the end of May, and now you're, that person becomes available in that geographic location where they're already grounded in that part of the county people familiar, and they continue through the summer. So you're, you're working on a good pattern there, and that's been true throughout. And then, a difficult example, a week ago, I went to Whitehall's equivalent of what you're doing tonight, and they thought they had all kinds of buy-in from their council, and it turned out they did not. There were challenges made about certain portions of the budget, and they were coming up against under their charter and their deadline. So please work toward making sure you don't follow their example and have a disruptive budget process, but make sure your differences are clear here in the work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who has Bruce?
Number seven on the agenda is city manager update, Jeff.
Oh, you want me to talk again? I got too small.
I have the timer set.
One is, at the last meeting, council member, he asked a little bit about timeline. I think the biggest one with timelines is going to be parks. I think at a future meeting, because there's all the caveats and conditions, it wouldn't parks kind of lay out as far as engineering and funding and grants and all that, is one of the work sessions, I will focus on kind of that timeline approach, so you can kind of see him. So it seems like rather than doing it here as part of this, we'll kind of address it at that meeting. The other item I had, I don't know if you saw, Michigan Municipal League had a notice about legislation regarding when local municipal elected officials take their seat. If you remember, we talked about this when we were talking about terms, there were three things the attorney mentioned, if we were going through this process, that we would have to do the charter amendment for the mayoral change, we did the resolution for the council change, and that we also should look at when council members take their seat, because our charter conflicts with state law. Well, the state legislation, we decided we're just going to kick that down the road, because we don't let people take their seat till it's affirmed anyways. So legislation, because all the city, I shouldn't say all the cities, a lot of the cities have the same issue, they're going to address it through legislation, so we won't have to deal with it, so we don't have to worry about charter amendment. So figured it was in the works at some point, so sooner than later, I expect it will pass before the end of the year. Those are two things I have. Did I beat the timer?
Any questions for Jeff? Read on the agenda, then his message from myself and council member.
Yeah, I just want to thank Jeff, you and your team. I know this is tedious, and there's a lot of work that goes into formulating the budget, so thank you for all your attention to the aspects of it.
Ken?
Same thing. He does a good job of laying it out, explaining where the various loopholes are.
I agree. I guess one addition would be if any citizens have any questions, Jeff's staff certainly, and I would certainly be glad to relay, any questions? So please, ask.
I would just echo, the details in this are clear and concise, I appreciate that. This subcommittee note, this was so helpful to understand where, what the subcommittees are doing, and the progress that they're making, and where everything stands, so thank you very much for this.
Good, thank you.
And I don't have anything tonight, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's on hold.
Second.
All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We do adjourn, thank you for coming.